Hey, good evening. There is a quorum here present this evening and the May 19th, 2015 meeting of the Board of Education is called to order. We have a special guest with us tonight, Ms. Ella Rivada, fifth grade student at Pangborn Elementary School. Ella, would you step to the microphone and lead us on the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so tell us something you'd like us to know about Ella.
I have two hobbies and they are dance and volleyball.
Can't hear you.
Oh, I have two hobbies and they're dance and volleyball and...
Dance and volleyball, okay.
Very interested in animals, so I want to become a veterinarian when I go, when I grow up.
Large animal vet or dogs and cats, horses?
Probably a large animal vet, but I also like dogs a lot and cats too. I think it's really cool that our school is going to be taking fifth graders to like medical or STEM or services for a field trip, like we'll start at HCC, but then we'll go off and we'll get to learn about something that may have to do with our career or something that interests us.
Very good. I believe you have a couple special guests with you this evening. Would you like to introduce them to us? Okay, so that's principal, Mr. Meredith, and hi, Mom.
Hi.
What do you like best about school?
Probably that the students get to, well, fifth grade students get to switch for math because all students are at different, like, levels, so I think one of the test suites had kind of helped them see our, well, the scores, and then we were separated into groups, like, I am in Ms. Pebbles' class, which is for, like, some advanced people, but I like that we get to learn at our own paces. Some are faster than others, but it's really nice to get to learn at that sort of thing.
So you like math?
Yes, I also like reading, and my mom is an English teacher, so she kind of influences us.
You have to like reading then, right? You don't have much choice. Good choice. Anything else you'd like to share with us?
Um, I think that's about it.
Okay, thank you so much for coming this evening. It was a great honor. Okay, thank you. All right, I'm looking for approval of the agenda.
Madam President, I move for the approval of the agenda as presented by the Agenda Planning Committee.
Thank you, Dr. Harding, is a second. Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. Any discussion? All those in favor of the minutes, please signify.
Agenda.
Agenda, excuse me. Let me rephrase that. All those in favor of the agenda, please signify. Great, thank you. Seven zero and student concurs. Okay, now we're going to do the minutes. Looking for approval of minutes.
Madam President, I move for approval of the minutes of the business meeting held on Tuesday, May 5th, and the closed session held that same day, Tuesday, May 5th, 2015.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you, Dr. Harding. Discussion? All those in favor of the minutes, please signify. Six, opposition, abstention?
Safety, because it is not here for last minute.
Very good, thank you, and student concurs. All right, moving into public, public, sorry, why is it so loud? Public comment, a Shannon Green, would you come forward? Great, if you'd introduce yourselves, please be seated. We have three minutes to hear your comments. Thank you.
Hello, and I'm Shannon Green. Like I said, this is A.J. Green. He's a high schooler who just participated in robotics at the World Competition in Louisville, Kentucky. It's been a whirlwind sort of the past couple months, learning for one thing about robotics and also how competition works, and I've found that our county is in need of equipment and support for the robotics program, especially in the STEM schools. Our Williamsport High School only has a robot that was paid for by a parent and then a tax deduction was given back. However, they don't have a practice field, so they're already not, you know, equal to other people who are competing. We found at Worlds that there are actually, most of the schools are compensated by the school systems, their trips were paid for, and our teacher was scrambling for some money at the begin, at the end, and he did get money for himself to go, however, that's not, you know, a team, so we can't really, you know, just one person be paid for to go. So my belief is that the robotics is something that engages the children and encompasses all that is STEM, science, technology, engineering, and math, and therefore we should provide some more support financially and support in general. I was very disappointed that there wasn't an article written that our kids had made, made it to Worlds. It wasn't until I was approached by Herald Mail, well, actually, I made a comment in the newspaper and approached, was approached by Herald Mail reporter, that now they're starting to backtrack and do a couple articles. There wasn't even an announcement on the school announcements that our kids made it to Worlds. So, in general, just support. I think these kids deserve it, just as much as, you know, an athletic team or a music team. They're a team and they've worked hard all year and they deserve their support. So, I would like to ask for some money. Another goal of mine is that I would like to see elementary school included. I found that the Worlds, elementary, middle, and high school compete, so I'd like to get a club started in the elementary school at Williamsport, considering they are the STEM school representation. So I would like some money to start off getting the robot and stuff set up for them as well, and it only makes sense for them to be involved in this, it's called VEX robotics, because that's what they do in middle school and then in high school. Another fact that I had learned was Springfield had two, two teams that could have gone to states. They did not go to states, and I don't know the exact reason why, but that's really, that's not okay with me. If, if you've gone to local and you're, you're building and competing all year, those kids should have, should have made it to states at least. So what I would like to ask for, for, from the board, is money to start, like I said, a, a program at Williamsport Elementary, a club, some money to start with the robot. I'm aiming for $5,000. Springfield Middle, of course, should continue their robotics club, and I don't honestly know what they have, but I'm sure they, they could use the support as well. And I'm asking for $10,000 for Williamsport High School because their goal, their goal is to have two teams next year. I believe he wants to do a boys' and a girls' team. And I'd also like to see some money set aside for, in the future, whether it's a STEM school Williamsport or not, if anyone in the county makes it to Worlds and it involves that sort of travel, I'd like to see some money set aside for families and the participants to be able to go and support the team and represent Washington County. So I believe that that is it, and...
As we all may know, our community is coming to a point where the STEM fields are taking over a lot of the professions for adults, and we, we want support as far as, we also want support as far as getting the word out, not just for publicity for ourselves, but to inspire peo, people my age, or whether it's elementary schoolers, to work for the STEM field, because we all know that's where our community is leading, and it would be better to have as many people as possible working on that.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you. Are you...
I think I've covered about everything. I wanted to approach you at the end of this year because, to, to be honest, this has been a whirlwind. We got accepted, we've been running for a couple months, and I wanted the word to get out, at least by the end of this year, so we can start for next year. I, I really want to get that, that club started in the elementary program and be ready for Worlds next year.
Have you brought your request forward within your school administration?
I have not. I am new to this and I don't know the legalities. I had just been told, go to the board. I have spoke with the teacher supervisor, I spoke with, I have not spoke with the high school principal, but I spoke with the elementary principal, and she's all for starting a club. We just need to get a teach, a teacher to volunteer time as far as staying after and such.
Follow up with her?
We'll follow up.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Okay, James Doyle. Again, three minutes, Mr. Doyle. Welcome.
Thank you very much. It's good to see everyone again. The first time I was here, I talked about our visit to the Naval Academy. I was actually there this morning. They invited me there for a tournament. They were determining the best chess player in the brigade, and we're also making plans for next year's visit from our students. So things are happening with the Naval Academy. On the second time I was here, I talked about the positive impact of chess for children with special needs, and today I'd very simply like to read an excerpt. I'd like to talk about the, the positive effects of chess on standard test scores, and I'd like to read a very short excerpt from an article entitled Chess and Standard Test Scores by James Liptrap. He writes that regular non-honors elementary students who participated in a school chess club showed twice the improvement of non-chess players in reading and mathematics between the third and fifth grades on the Texas Assessment of Academic Skills. And I believe I've sent everyone a link to that article probably a couple of weeks ago. I, I'd like to just ask you, as the school year is rapidly coming to a close, the, the lib, we, we actually finished, we ran a 14-week semester for the program at the library, and we finished a couple of weeks ago, but the parents and the students want to continue. So we're probably going to continue through the summer on Sunday afternoons, but I'd like to do more with chess, and I'd like to ask you if it might be possible simply to make one of your schools available, say during the week, when we could offer chess programs for the kids and maybe even some chess camps. I've got all the equipment, I've bought everything, I've got chess sets enough for 60 students. If you simply give me some space, I will make this opportunity available to your students, and, and I'd just like to put that idea in front of you this evening. I would love to do it, I, I just need a classroom, some space to operate out of, and I'll be happy to do it during the week.
Thank you, Mr. Doyle.
Thank you.
A Carlos Malat.
How are you?
I'm fine, and yourself?
I'm doing very well. Thank you very much. All right, I will try to be brief. Good evening, Dr. Wilcox, President Brightman, and members of the board. Thank you for the time. I come to you...
Excuse me, are you coming as an individual or representing?
Yes, as a, as a parent. I'm here as a parent.
Very good, thank you.
I am a parent of a middle school student and an elementary school student, both in Smithsburg. I come to you today to follow up on a letter that I wrote to you about a month ago regarding the decision to cut elementary Spanish at Smithsburg Elementary School, and thank you very much, President Brightman, for responding. I really appreciate that. But recently it has been made public that children at a few other schools, three other schools, will also not receive foreign language after the school year, and I'm, I'm here today to express my disappointment in that. And although I, I understand and I respect that you have very difficult decisions to make in terms of budget and so forth, I, I don't, I don't agree with this decision in terms of, of the perspective of, of business. Businesses move to places where there are quality schools for their, for their employees and their families, and I've often heard that Washington County has had some challenges in bringing businesses and people to the county to live and work. I believe that by having foreign language in schools, the quality of education increases, thus bringing in businesses, families, and revenue to Washington County in terms of diversity. Last year, Washington County Public Schools did a great job and was praised in the public for their efforts to improve diversity, to recruit diverse staff, and then to create a diversity task force. Ms. Francisco was, was instrumental in that, and she's done a great job, so I have to give her kudos for that. There also was a distribution of a survey, which I participated in as a parent. One of the themes was comfort levels of students and parents and staff who were minorities. One way to increase cultural awareness and comfort is to teach children about different cultures and languages. In the foreign language classroom, it's, it's a place where there occurs valuable, valuable experiences, where stereotypes lose their strength, where children are exposed to a place, a country, and a world that they may not otherwise be familiar with outside of, of Washington County. And then these children grow, grow up to be adults, who maybe, just maybe, are less likely to carry with them certain biases or stereotypes into adulthood that, that become so prevalent in our society and our cultural, culture today. So, you know, just when I thought that, you know, I, I really thought that Washington County Public Schools was doing so well in the area of diversity, and then, and then this cut happens, and I, I don't, I feel like that really sets back some of the progress and the efforts that have been made so far. Just two or three more points and then I'm done. Students who learn another language are exposed to experiences that prepare them for dealing with the global economy and a changing world that is every day more competitive. A child who speaks more than one language is arguably more marketable and competitive than a person who only speaks one language. In some cases, the older you get, the, the harder it is to learn new things, and I think with language it's the same. You know, their, their minds at this young age of ele, in elementary, they're, they're like sponges, and, and they really pick it up quickly, and I feel that by cutting this at that level, then we really deprive the students of that opportunity, and we kind of close that window where language and learning is, is at its best. One more point. On April 29th, an article appeared in the Herald Mail that talked about a visit by Boonsborough students to the White House who were studying Japanese, where they had heard comments by the Japanese Prime Minister and President Obama. This is a, a really good example of how foreign language can, can open doors and, and have opportunities, not just for those students, but also the school system itself. It, it was really a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity, and so it was disappointing to see that article come out, and then at the same time, on the back end, we, we cut foreign language out of four schools. So, in conclusion, thank you for your time. I, I can commit to you that I will do my part as a parent and try to be active and engage in the school, and, and I will, you know, if it's something that the school or the parents or the principal wants, I will volunteer my time, we'll start a Spanish club, we'll do whatever we can do. But I, I just, I, I'll do what I can to ensure opportunities for my kid and, and all the other kids, right? But I feel that, that by cutting foreign language, it, it makes that a little bit more difficult, and, and I guess I would just finish up by saying that it's my hope that I'm not here in front of you next year, speaking against cuts in the other four schools. You know, hopefully there's no cuts in music, band, orchestra, art, sports, whatever. It's just my hope that this is it, but I thank you for all that you do on behalf of, of the kids and families and community of Washington County. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Malat. All right, any board member response to these public comments this evening? All right, we'll move on to unfinished business. Consideration, second reading of proposed changes to policy IND. Mr. Trotta?
Thank you, good afternoon. Joining the Board of Educations, public business meeting conducted on May the 5th, the members approved the first reading of the proposed changes to policies IND, INDB, and they also approved the rescission of policies INDA and INDC. Since the first meeting, the community has been provided with an opportunity to offer comments. We have not received any comments on these proposed changes. The Policy Committee is recommending the approval of the second reading of these policies. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Trotta. Is there a motion?
Madam President, I move for the approval of the second reading of proposed changes to policy IND entitled School Ceremonies and Observances, and policy INDB entitled School Ceremonies and Observances in Silent Meditation, and to rescind policy INDA entitled School Ceremonies and Observances Fledged to the Flag, and policy INDC entitled School Ceremonies and Observations Constitution Day.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ridenhour. Mrs. Fisher, any additional comments?
Um, no, I, I'm sure that Mr. Trotta probably pointed out last... Omar. Necessary. We did slight variations, and that's why we didn't keep it to the policy.
Very good discussion. Ms. Harshman?
I had two corrections. On IMDC, there should be the Oxford comma after object, yeah, objective, factual, objective, and respectful manner. And then, and then on IMDA, there's some awkward wording here. It says to observe a brief period of time in silent meditation, and I would like to change it to observe silent meditation for a brief period of time, as opposed to observing a brief period of time.
Is, is that a motion, Mrs. Harshman?
Because this... Make those two changes to the, the...
This is a second read? You could have brought this forward during the first read, just a...
I didn't, didn't notice it at the time, I'm sorry.
Mrs. Trot, Mr. Trotta, do you...
And it's just, it's not really a change, it's just a...
We don't consider this anything significant.
It would not be significant.
Perfect. Okay, so that is a motion. Everyone understands those two changes, okay?
Madam President, could you have them repeated, please?
Excuse me?
Could you repeat the motion?
Mrs. Harshman?
Sure. On IMDC, to put a comma in the first section under purpose, the last sentence after the And then IMDA, there are two sections there that have to observe a brief period of time. Instead, to reverse that so that it says to observe silent meditation for a brief period of time. So that would be in, under the, under purpose, and there are two there, to observe a brief, to observe silent meditation for a brief period of time, and then the very last line, for observing silent meditation for a period, okay? Then down below in policy, statement, procedures, the last line also has to observe silent meditation for a brief period of time. meditation for a brief period of time."
Mr. Trotta? Are we... Mr. Ridenhour? That's the motion. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Gessford. Any discussion on the amendment? All those in favor, please signify. Any abstentions? It is six to one. The amendment passes, and the student concurs. Okay, we are back to the original motion. Any further discussion? Okay, the original motion made by Mrs. Fisher. All those in favor? As amended? Okay. Seven-one, student concurs. Seven-zero, student concurs. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Trotta. Onto new business, consent agenda. Mrs. Freeman? Is Dr. Michael coming forward?
Good evening, President Brightman, Dr. Wilcox, and members of the board. Have ten items on the consent agenda for your consideration this evening. I'm going to give you a brief overview and try to get through them quickly as I can. First item is a construction of a multipurpose room addition at Williamsport High School. The purpose of this project is to create a 4,000-square-foot addition to the existing high school. The addition will contain a new multipurpose room, concession stand, team room, storage area. This project is a public-private partnership between the Board of Education and the Williamsport Wildcat Athletic Boosters Club. The work will commence on June 15th and should be substantially completed by November 12th. This project is recommended to be awarded to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, Milton Stamper Builders of Hagerstown, Maryland, at a total cost of $731,910. That total does include two alternates, which would provide for the installation of aluminum windows in the multipurpose room, and athletic mat floor tile in the addition. The second item on the agenda is the bid for hardwood mulch. This is a unit price contract. It has a term running through December with options for renewal. The contract is being recommended for award to the mulch man. They're the most economical bid based on the projected purchases under this contract. Item three is for a fuel management system. This contract will supply and install a new fuel management system at the Transportation Department. Consists of a web-based site fuel controller, which will integrate with office management software, allowing for unattended and remote automated fuel dispensing from the transportation location. This project is recommended for award to Petroleum Services at a cost of $37,885. Item four is a schedule of purchases of 91 MacBooks, 180 iPad devices, five mice, and two desktop computers to Apple Incorporated in a total price tag of $153,242. Item five on the agenda is a recommendation to extend the same pricing the school system has paid for the last five years to Control Systems Incorporated under the Building Automated Energy Management Temperature Control Annual Service Contract. CSI has designed and installed pneumatic electronic computerized temperature control systems and process controls, allowing for energy management and automation of those systems in the school district. This contract is recommended for a sixth year at $228,500. Item six is a contract for inspection, maintenance, and repair of physical education equipment. This contract allows for annual inspection and preventative maintenance and the expeditious repair of equipment in the physical education and gyms throughout the district. The contract period would be effective from April through April 16th of 2016. The total of four of those annual inspections is $33,150. Item seven on the agenda is a recommendation to renew the current contract for refuse and recyclables collection and disposal processing services. The board originally approved the contract in May of 2013 for a two-year term. This recommendation is to invoke the option for a second, for years three and four under that agreement. It would take us through June of 2017. Prices under the contract have increased somewhat by about 3% and services have increased, resulting in 10% overall increase since the bid was awarded two years ago. Item eight on the agenda is to purchase a cargo van for the Maintenance and Operations This van is, utilizes a Arlington, Virginia contract. The board has authorized purchases under this contract in the past. The van cost is $38,363.12. Item nine are three requisitions for some equipment for the track and field. Requisition 1-823-52 is for a high-jump pit, top pad, weather cover, standards, and crossbar for Hancock Middle and High School. There's another requisition for the same exact equipment for Williamsport High School. My third requisition is for a varsity pole, varsity pit, top pad, weather cover standards, base pads, box collar, tie-down system, and crossbar for the Hancock School. The recommended vendor is Ritchie Athletics, and these orders utilize an Orange County, Florida, contract. Item 10 on the agenda is to purchase two sport utility vehicles for the Transportation Department. These purchases will be made under the National Joint Powers Alliance Contract 102811 at a total price tag of $45,917.74. Concludes my 10 action items for your consideration this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Freeman. This is a consent agenda. We need a motion.
Madam President, excuse me, Madam President, I move to approve the following bids, proposals. First, the construction of a multipurpose room addition at Williamsport High School to Milton Stamper, Stamper, excuse me, builders at $731,910. Hardwood mulch to the mulch man at bid unit prices. Fuel management system to Petroleum Services, Inc. at $37,885. Macintosh computers and iPads to Apple Incorporated at $153,242. Extension of the current contract for building automation, energy temperature controls to Control Systems, Inc. at $228,500. Renewal of the current contract for inspection, maintenance, and repair of physical education equipment to RJ McCarville Associates at $14,700, and to TJ Distributors at $18,450 with established unit rates for repairs. Renewal of the current contract for refuse, refuse and recyclable collection and disposal processing for two years to Waste Management Holdings Incorporated at $285,339, $285,339.84 a year. Cargo van for the Maintenance Department to American Truck and Bus, Inc. at $38,363.12. Athletic equipment for Williamsport High and Hancock Middle High Schools to Ritchie Athletics at $33,246. And finally, two sport utility vehicles to National Auto Fleet Group at 45,917.74.
Thank you, Mr. Ridenhour. A second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Harding's. Okay, discussion, 10 items. Mr. Gessford?
Yeah, I just have a maintenance question, I guess. Excuse me. Is there a way that we can have a corresponding number with the budget line items so that we're, when we vote on these, we know where we are in the budget for each year? So if we're budgeting a certain amount, and we take something out of that, is there a way that we would be able to have some type of line item so we're subtracting it on our own, so we know where we are at the spending point?
We do have in here the fund sources. You've seen that on the spreadsheet. And again, I think you're asking for a corresponding line item on the operating budget, because this is all in this year's general fund.
I understand that. But for like, coming years, for especially next year, when I'm looking at these things and I'm voting on them, I would like to see if we're taking a vehicle out, that I can say, okay, we've voted on that amount in the budget for vehicles, and I can keep subtracting that out. It's kind of hard to follow that budget the way it is now. We just don't know. I mean, we're voting on it, and it might be fine, but we don't know if we're over-budget or under-budget throughout the year. And I was wondering if there's some way that we could have a correspondence that throughout, when we do these consent agendas, that we know where we are.
Sort of like an update to actuals?
Probably, I was going to say, we probably could add line item numbers to each of the general funds, just kind of...
That would help.
I think it's helpful if the item is line itemed in the budget, but if it's from a collected category, I will say there are smaller dollar purchases that don't rise to the level that I would be presenting them here at the board.
As a line item.
As a line item.
They would be in aggregate, so it wouldn't...
Excuse me. There's no way for us to do what Mr. Gessford is asking for. He can get this information by meeting with me or perhaps talking with, but because of the way we account for things, he's, you're going to look at a line item that we'd be buying cars and other things out of, and he's never going to see, be able to add up the cars, because some things don't come to the board for approval, because there are thresholds where I approve things, and so it will never add up for you.
Throughout the year, though, you'll never be, you won't be able to tell what the balance is?
Well, I would know what the balance is, but then if, then what I might do is an inner fund transfer if I want to buy something else. So it's kind of a faux bottom line for you, because I only, I have individual line items, but I budget to categories. So I just, we don't account like a traditional business does. We don't have a straight accrual accounting system.
Okay.
I mean, we certainly can, you know, well, first of all, I would be in jail if I recommended expanding our budget beyond what our budget capacity was. The board has always looked at its budget as an expenditure plan, but not as something where you would say, well, you know what, I can't buy any more Crayolas today because I'm at the bottom. We just don't operate that way. It's a different accounting system. But I think we could certainly tell you, for example, that in a category, say for technology, where we had a million dollars that we have spent on a monthly basis, I know what percent of budget I've spent. I can share that document with you so that you know. We tend to try to spend money in a ratio that corresponds to the year. So, for example, salaries of people is, are easy. If we're 85% through the year, we've expended about 85% of our salary dollars. I could show you that for any budget line, but I don't think we should put it in with our purchasing material. So how about if you and I meet sometime, and then I'll show you what I review on a month-to-month basis, if that's helpful to you?
That'd be great.
Okay. I just don't think we could do it in this process.
I think it would slow me down considerably.
Well, you would grind to a stop, I think. But I can help you with that. Thank you.
That'd be great.
That'd be great.
Okay. Additional questions?
Yes, and one other thing to add to that. The first thing we have on the agenda in every finance committee meeting is the financial report.
I understand that.
So that certainly gives us a higher-level picture than I'm sure what the superintendent looks at every month.
One of the things the procurement review group does is they look at the fund, the source of funds, too, before we recommend the purchase. We make sure that the funds are in the right categories to move forward, and there's a balance available to cover that expense.
I just don't want to vote on something that we're close to a number, and we've overextended, extended ourselves on that. And even though it can be adjusted throughout moving things around, I just don't want to ever extend my vote for something that maybe we are already at the line, the bottom line.
Very good. I understand that.
Thank you.
And I was also going to comment on the multipurpose room addition. It was good to see that bid come in about where we thought it would be. So it appears that we're well within the finance model that we developed with the MOU with the boosters there. Is that right?
That's correct. I think we probably could anticipate the potential of a change order here or there, depending upon what we get into when we actually open up the site, attach to the building, those types of things. But we were very pleased with the participation in the bid and the bid result.
That's great. That's good news for us, good news for the Williamsport community, really. Thank you for anticipating so well, and in the preparation of the MOU, making sure that the, they were based on a real good set of numbers. It makes everybody look good.
Additional questions? Seeing none, the question is on Mr. Ridenhour's motion. All those in favor? Looks like a seven-zero with student concurring. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item for consideration is the donation in the amount of $11,900 to Rockland Woods Elementary School. Mr. Simler?
Good evening, President Brightman, Dr. Wilcox, members of the board. I'm requesting the approval of the gift in the amount of $11,900 from Rockland Woods, PTA, to Rockland Woods Elementary School. The generous donation will be used for various student incentives and rewards, as well as to offset costs related to field trips, student activities, and instructional materials such as student magazine subscriptions.
Thank you. All right. This is a item for formal action. A motion is required.
Madam President, I move to approve a donation in the amount of $11,900 to Rockland Woods Elementary School from the Rockland Woods School PTO.
Thank you, Mr. Ridenhour. A second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher. Questions or comments? All those in favor? Seven-zero, student concurring. Please send our thanks to the PTO there.
Will do. It's very strong PTO out there.
Excellent.
Very much.
Thank you. Next consideration, Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, Part B, passed-through grant. Welcome, Mr. Gladhill.
Dr. Gladhill.
Dr. Gladhill, sorry.
We're requesting this evening approval for our fiscal year 2016 local application for federal funds. The only main change is from previous years is we've seen a decrease of two students, which isn't much in lines of a percentage when you're looking at 2,200 students. We're also looking for additional assistance to assist us in successful transitions from students back from non-public schools, and transition between schools for students going on from elementary to middle, middle to high in some of our programs for next year. If you look at the packet provided this year, there's a decrease of about $48,000 from last year, and the FY '15 year was an actual increase of about $125,000 from FY '14. And what accounts for those changes is the difference of our farms rate compared to other counties and different demographics like it is in our general fund. With that said, I'd like to entertain any questions you may have and request approval of this application.
Thank you. A motion, please.
Madam President, I move to approve the FY 2016 Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, Part B, passed-through grant.
Thank you, Dr. Harding's. A second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ridenhour. Discussion, questions for Dr. Gladhill? Is this document available on our school system? Is this document available on our school system webpage?
It was, the document wasn't put up, but there was a notification ran in the Herald Mail to come in and meet with me about any questions, and I'm open to review it at any point in time.
And once we've voted on this document tonight, would it be made available? I was at a CACAC meeting earlier today and several parents had asked about the availability of the document.
Yes, I was actually gonna review it today, but I had a personal emergency because my daughter was sick at school and I had to pick her up.
I'm sorry.
So I apologize for that.
No, but would it be available or do they, a parent would have to come in and meet, or could we make it available on the website?
It could be made available, but as you see, it's pretty complicated, so I would prefer to meet with parents that would be interested in seeing it so I could explain any questions they may have, because I wouldn't want somebody to see like a line item and think it's for something when in actuality it might go towards a different purpose. But it is something we could take into consideration and review.
And maybe CACAC could put it on their agenda for one of the meetings-
Most definitely. We could do that in our next meeting.
Perfect, thank you.
It's on Board Docs right now, right?
Yes, it should be. But I mean, I don't think it lives anywhere in your life because we do amendments to it throughout the year.
Okay.
We put it on Board Docs and I'm assuming parents can access that now through today's meeting.
I'd probably sign a budget amendment to this at least once every two weeks, once a month, for sure. So keeping those individual budgets then up to date would be problematic, but I think going to CPAC will be an outstanding idea, taking copies of the document, letting people see it, but it's not a static document.
Got it, okay, understood, thank you. Any questions or comments? Okay, we have Dr. Harding's motion, all those in favor? Seven-zero, student concurs. Thank you, Dr. Gladhill. Okay, final action item for consideration, Dr. Michael? To approve the change to primary election day.
Again, President Breitman, board members and Dr. Wilcox, during the legislative session this spring, the legislative body approved a change to primary election day during presidential election, primary times. It has moved from the first Tuesday of April to the fourth Tuesday of April. According to COMAR, we have to be closed to students during the primary election and the general election. The recommendation is that we move the April 5th day, which is currently a day that schools are closed, CES is open, from, just pick up that little triangle that's on our calendar right now and move it from the 5th to April 26. And that primary election day will be on April 26, will be closed to students, twelve month employees will work normal workday that day. And that is our recommendation for the calendar for 2015-16.
Thank you. A motion?
Madam President, I move to approve the change to primary election day reflected on the 2015-2016 school calendar from April 5th to April 26.
Thank you, Dr. Harding's, a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. Discussion, questions? All those in favor? Seven-zero, student concurs. Thank you, Dr. Michael. All right, that moves us to the superintendent's report. Anything tonight, Dr. Wilcox?
Just perhaps a couple of things. I see Mrs. Green is still in the audience and her son AJ, so I just want to comment a little bit. Last year, we spent a little over a hundred thousand dollars on our robotics programs, not including the time we spent paying teachers to participate beyond the contract hours. That hundred thousand dollars primarily came to us through a partnership with Volvo, who really is the genesis for our robotics activities, but we will go back and take a careful look at the support that we can provide. We have a number of programs in the district right now where young people are earning opportunities to go to world competitions. We have a group that's today at, they're in Tennessee at the World Destination Imagination Championships. Being able to support families is difficult, but perhaps supporting the teachers and others who go to perhaps buy that trip down is something that we could do more of. We do do some, but not a whole lot. So we will take a look at that, and I really do appreciate your advocacy. Clearly hear that the introduction of robotics into our schools is an important element to help kids work with both their creative design, their conceptual understandings of physics and other sciences, so your comments did not fall on deaf ears tonight, we'll see what we can do. I also want to tell you that just last week, I reported your world championship team to all three thousand district employees through my Friday update, as well as that I got a text message from Richard Wright, who is our public information officer, who did send it out to multiple media locations. Now, they didn't choose to run it, but we can't control that, but he did send it out as well. It was also posted on our website, it was posted on our Facebook page, and I believe we tweeted it out as well. So we tried to use social media to get the word out because we're very proud of the young people, your son included. So we'll keep working hard to do a better job on that, and I'll reach out to you outside of this meeting on some of the funding issues, because we're also doing some things at some of our elementary schools, not with the VEX competitions, but with some simpler, younger-aged, age-appropriate technologies, so we'll work on that. There was one other thing that I wanted to mention. Mr. Malott did speak to the elimination of some of the elementary science programs, Spanish programs, I didn't say science, did I? I did say that. It's kind of like that one percent thing.
Yeah, I know.
And we have reduced the number of elementary Spanish opportunities in the district because we looked at the instructional model and it just wasn't producing the results that we wanted. He did reference the Japanese program and the success that that program is having. Clearly, we have a great teacher there, as we have some great Spanish teachers as well, but one thing to note is the Japanese program at Boonsboro is not a program that begins the elementary school and middle school, it's a program at the high school level. So the comments were not lost, I mean, we understand that young people have a proclivity to learn a language earlier. We're certainly not backing away for the rest of our lives from language at the elementary level, but for right now, we think there's a better allocation of those resources. Then the final thing that I wanted to mention tonight to our friends in the Boonsboro community, we were all greatly disheartened when we saw the act of vandalism. I will not call it a senior prank, I will call it what it is. I think it was an act of vandalism by some young people who defaced the school property and really a mascot that has meant a lot to generations of folks from the Boonsboro community. We are going to be relentless in our pursuit of resolving this issue, and we will spare no expense to correct the situation at Boonsboro, getting the graffiti cleaned up and making sure that the other areas that were defaced are put back right. So I just wanted to let the community know.
Thank you, Dr. Wilcox. Thoughtful response and report this evening to people who took time to come in and share their concerns with us, so thank you. Personnel, Mrs. Francisco.
Mrs. Breitman, Dr. Wilcox, members of the board, there are before you this evening several personnel actions for your review, excuse me, review and approval.
It's contagious, isn't it? It's been a long day. Thank you. Motion for the personnel action.
Madam President, I move for the approval of personnel actions recommended by staff.
Thank you, Dr. Harding's, a second?
Second.
Mr. Reidenauer? All those in favor? Seven-zero, and student abstains. Thank you. That brings us to board member committee reports. Curriculum instruction, Mrs. Harshman.
Curriculum instruction has not had a meeting since our last business meeting, but we are planning to meet next week. The time has not been determined yet because we have kind of a conflict, so the agenda, time and location will appear on the website.
Thank you. Facilities committee.
Yes, the facilities committee has not met since our last meeting. We have a meeting scheduled for Tuesday, May 26 at 12:00 noon. We'll be meeting in the deputy superintendent's conference room. We have a draft agenda that will go out to members and will be posted.
Thank you. Mr. Guesford, finance.
Thank you. Finance committee will be meeting on May 26 at 10:45 on the third floor conference room, so.
Very good. Policy review, Mrs. Fisher and Development.
Policy committee met this morning. We revised some areas of policy, IGC, which now combines four existing policies. Staff will be looking at this policy to add definitions. Therefore, the committee recommended rescinding IGBB, IGBBA and IGBBB. Next, we discuss policy IGBJ, compulsory attendance ages, home instruction. Staff will review our own procedures and regulations with COMAR, state law and our extensive website to determine if we have any additional requirements that would necessitate our continuing to have a policy on this topic. Finally, we discuss whether there is a need for policy IGBB entitled Gifted and Talented Students. Staff will be coming back to us with a recommendation as to whether this policy can be rescinded or not based on compliance with state law, COMAR, and again, our extensive gifted and talented material on our website. Our next meeting is next Tuesday, May 26 at 9:00 a.m. I also have an ad hoc committee update. We have not met recently since our last business meeting, but we will be meeting on 27th at 10:00 a.m. And at this time, I would like to ask the board if we may extend the deadline previously set for the ad hoc committee to hold a work session on communication. If we could hold that until, off until either late June or early July because of all the other tasks and issues that occur at this time of the year, working on budget negotiation, of course, graduation, other activities and so on. It would be appreciated since I have been ill and we have not had a meeting for a while, and also I think we have enough other items to keep us busy until that time.
I think the original charge was June 30. That was the original deadline in the charge. So do you want to extend the deadline to, say, 31st, July 31st, or do you think you might complete things by the end of June and we just do the work session later? As chair, you would-
This morning, Rod and I had a discussion. We might be able to do it in one more meeting and might take two more meetings for the work session.
Why don't we delay the work session? The agenda committee can find a different date for that if you feel you could complete the work at the ad hoc by June 30.
Unless you want to wait until after our meeting next week, and then we'll determine if we can do it done by the end of June.
That's fine, so we'll delay that decision, get some more information. Thank you. Mr. Reidenauer, HR.
Yes, HR will meet, excuse me. HR will meet the next Tuesday at 2:00, I believe it is, in the Washington conference room. I'll tell you exactly the date. That's wrong. My apologies. Yeah, we will meet the 26th at 2:00, 1:30, excuse me, in the Washington conference room.
Very good. Any reports from MAE committees? There won't be a legislative response team because the session is over and at this point, there's no updates on that, so any other committee reports that I've failed to recognize here? All right, moving on to miscellaneous, an opportunity for approval of the MAE Maryland Association of Boards of Education, Board of Directors, and opening it for nominations. You can nominate someone else or yourself. Mrs. Williams?
Yes, I nominate Karen Harshman as Washington County submission to the MAE nominating committee for consideration as a nomination to the MAE Board of Directors.
Okay. Nomination, any other nominations?
Madam President, for just a point of order, aren't these positions self-nominating? I mean, I'm puzzled as to why we are dominating something that you can nominate yourself if you so desire.
There are two different ways to ask to serve on the Board of Directors of MAE. One of those is to go through your local district board and ask to be nominated, and that's sent in to the nominating committee with a formal vote. The other one is you can self-nominate. So there are two ways of doing it, you're correct. I wanted to give an opportunity to board members who wanted to use this process. Is there a second on the nomination for Mrs. Harshman? Thank you. Mr. Guesford, any discussion?
Mrs. Breitman?
Yes.
Hasn't the deadline passed for nominations? I recall getting a letter from you forwarded from the MAE president, goodness, back in March, indicating that the deadline for nominations was May 18, which was yesterday.
That is correct, and this, just to give some background, I sent an email out to members once I received the original notification in March, asking for anyone who wanted to put their name forward. I did not receive a response, so it was not added to the agenda at that time. I sent a reminder out, I think a couple weeks ago, and did state at that time that we would be past the May 18 deadline, which was yesterday because our meeting is today. I called the chair of the nominating committee and asked if they would still receive a nomination a day late. So I have been able to make that consideration if indeed we send Mrs. Harshman's name forward.
And, okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, Mrs. Williams' nomination, the motion for Mrs. Harshman's name to go forward to the nominating committee at MAE. All those in favor, please indicate. Those opposed? And I believe the student concurred with the majority, so it's a five-two and student concurred with majority. Thank you. I'll do that paperwork and send that forward. Thank you. Okay, future agenda items, June 2, I would suggest that everyone eat their spinach or their cherios or whatever and come prepared for a very busy day. We'll be deciding on the budget, any budget amendments. The education facility master plan is on the agenda. Redistricting is on the agenda for that as well. So we are now down to board member comments, and I believe tonight, we're gonna start with Mr. Reidenauer.
Yes, Madam President, just a list, it's been a busy time. I was, had the privilege of attending quite a few functions that occur at this time of year. The first one, for the first time, I went to the Tech High's Mardi Gras dinner at, it's their theme dinner, which they take care of each and every year. This year was Mardi Gras was the theme, which was outstanding, service and everything else about it was first class. That same evening, I went to what was referred to as the best- That same evening, I went to what was referred to as the Best Buddies Prom, in which some of our special students had an opportunity for a prom experience, and they were accompanied by their best buddies, students of ours who worked with them frequently. It was touching, and it was something that, you know, was thrilling to be there and see those kids have an opportunity to feel special, which they might not have had that opportunity without this event. Went to the STEM Middle College Recognition Ceremony last week, to see several of our students who are graduating from HCC, as well as graduating from high school in the same year. Went to the Exhibition of Learning at Morgansville to see the work of some of our elementary students. The Celebration of Excellence last week, where our students who have grade point averages exceeding 4.0 were recognized. And then finally, probably one of my favorite events, which was the fifth grade citizenship event, to see those young people who were recognized for outstanding citizenship within their schools. And I attended the Bisfa Gala last weekend, and again, was overwhelmed by the quality of performances and by students in all the areas that are part of the Bisfa program, theater, music, instrumental music, visual arts, and I think the one that struck me the most was the creative writing, and some of the efforts by those students. It's mind-boggling what they're writing, and we will see it, I'm sure, in the future. So it's been a busy week, but it was a lot of fun. It's one of those times of the year that I greatly appreciate.
Thank you, Mr. Ridenhour, Ms. Fisher. I have no comments tonight. Mr. Gessford?
I have no comments.
Dr. Hardings?
Yes, a few things. My list of events isn't as extensive as Mr. Ridenhour's. I was out of town on business all last week, so I had to miss many of those events. I did attend the ribbon cutting for the new Lincolnshire Library, which was just a spectacular, inspiring kind of event. Kids all stood up and read thank yous to all the various people who had anything to do with the success of that project, folks from FedEx there, and what's the other nonprofit? Dr. Wilcox?
Yeah.
Or Hearts of America? Hearts of America. Great example of a partnership between the school system, a nonprofit, a business, to really provide new opportunities for kids. I will confess to not really remembering what the old library looks like, but the new library is a place that I would definitely want to sit down and read. It was very, very touching. The highlight for me, in fact, was Dr. Wilcox introduced the principal and spoke a little bit about the school, and she got up and gave her remarks. And I think it's fair to say, in a somewhat emotional tone, said, you know, "A few years ago, Dr. Wilcox called me and told me I was going to be the new principal at Lincolnshire, and I didn't know that that was the day that was going to change my life." Very touching and dedicated staff there. So thanks for all involved. I also went to the Museum of Fine Arts Display of Middle School Art Exhibits. Mrs. Harshman spoke about the elementary school a couple weeks ago. The middle school and high school art exhibits are up now, and I encourage anybody who wants to see what our young people are capable of to go and visit. One thing that really struck me is when we opened the Barbara Ingram School, a lot of people worried that it would hurt the arts in our other schools. If you walk around and see some of the arts from our other, art from our other high school students, I think it's hard to make that argument. If anything, I think it's highlighted the district's focus on the arts and really elevated all the students throughout the county to pursue their interest in the arts. And finally, next Monday is Memorial Day, and I know many of us will spend time with family and friends and barbecues and doing all the great things that we all should be doing when we have an extra day off. But I would encourage everybody, if you know a veteran, usually they're quiet, most of them don't talk much about their service, but if you know a veteran and have a chance to thank one or attend one of the many events, and just take a few minutes to remember why we have those events and why we have the day off, many of the veterans you can thank are people who, but for the grace of God, are people who were not remembering on Memorial Day, because they made it back and they came home. So thank them for their service and remember what the day is. I think you'll make people's day if you do that. That's all.
Thank you, Dr. Harding. Mrs. Williams?
Thank you. Last Friday, I attended a Maryland Association of Board of Education Boardmanship session in Annapolis. The presentation was made by Terry McCabe from the National School Board Association. The topic was improving student achievement through raising student aspirations, and I have those materials, should any of my colleagues be interested in taking a look at those. Later that same afternoon, I was able to participate in a book discussion. The book was Brain Rules, and if anyone is interested in taking a look at that, it was a very informative read. I learned a lot about neuroscience, Dr. Harding's, but it was in layman's terms, and it was very easy for me to read and understand. So I have that, if anyone is interested in reading Brain Rules.
My brother is a neuroscientist.
Is he really?
Yeah.
I don't know that I'm ready to have a conversation with your brother as a result of reading the book.
Not sure I'm ready to have a conversation with my brother.
But it was a good read. Let's see. Oh, one other thing. As a result of our discussion last week, or two weeks ago, I guess, regarding the reinstitution of coffee and conversation, I received and have accepted an invitation to an informal meeting of parents to be held next week. I believe that's Tuesday, May 26. So that'll be a very busy day, and I think that's it.
Very good. Thank you. Mrs. Harshman?
Well, I could ditto Mrs. Williams' words, but I'll switch to the fact that this morning I spent time at the museum viewing the different exhibits with fourth graders from Potomac Heights. As their art teacher, Mrs. Nancy Green, allowed the students to attend this, she also had them write about some of the artists' works that they saw, and they were to give a critique on them. The secondary, our secondary students had produced wonderful artwork, and it was very enjoyable to see that, because I did get to see the elementary a couple weeks ago. The students were highly engaged and were very well behaved, and I would just like to thank Potomac Heights again for allowing me to help chaperone and to be there with their students. I had a wonderful morning. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McHose?
I have no comments. Thank you.
You have no comments. All right. Thank you. I just wanted to remind everyone that we will be voting on redistricting on June 2, and I want to be sure that everyone has an opportunity to seek information or make comments. Certainly, the Washington County Public Schools website is set up to receive comments and also to, full of information on redistricting. We also have our Facebook page, and you are also free to contact the Public Information Office, Mr. Richard Wright, at 301-766-2809. Again, I thank my colleagues for another successful business meeting, and we have reached the end of the agenda, and we are adjourned.